They're ready.
Good evening.
I don't have to wear my mask.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsal.
So please stand. We'll open up with the large prayer. Amen, Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen. Please face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Proco.
Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsal.
Present.
Councilmember Brooke Morcott.
Here.
Councilmember Marlin Lewis. Councilmember David Broussard.
Here.
Councilmember Deidre Ledbetter. Councilmember DeeDee Johnson Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Dustin Swear. You do have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Item one is public comment. This time I'll ask you, I'll remind you to please lower your cell phones. And there's no back and forth. We just listen to the public comment. Madam Clerk.
Richard Phillips for agenda item number 4A.
I have no objection to getting rid of blighted property. That isn't why I'm here. I think the bigger issue is the role of the councils, the state representatives. The people who govern us should keep the idea of the liberties that the people they govern are entitled to. I've had objections with this council about a decision that they made, and I'm fine with it. Half this country right now isn't really fine with a decision that was made at the national level. And they just, you know, some people think their liberties have been stepped on and other people don't. All I want to do is just remind you the definition of the word liberty. The state of being exempt from the domination of others or from restricting circumstances. Or the word freedom. I'm not running a civics class. I'm just saying that this council and everybody who makes decisions on other people's liberties should maybe read that definition before they decide what they, who gets, where the line is drawn. Who's right and who's wrong. I looked at the House on St. Peter today. I agree. It's an oasis of trees and it doesn't belong there. I mean, you may want the trees, but you have a blighted property. And I see nothing wrong with you proceeding, going ahead and cleaning up the city as you see fit. That's all I had to say today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item two.
Acceptance of the minutes of June 21st, 2022, which will publish on July 6th, 2022.
Do have a motion.
Move.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsal and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Morcott. Is there any discussion on our June 21st minutes? Hearing seen none? Please vote your machines. Thank you. Item 3A.
Resolution 22-144. Awarding contract to construction site specialties LLC for the sewer system improvements Basin D project, LCDBG fiscal year 2021, and ARPA, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do have a motion.
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 Motion by Councilman David Broussard and a second by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson Reed. Is there any discussion on this item?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So as I was reading through this resolution, it said that the money was going to come from the block grant and then American Rescue Plan Act. So my first question is, which project on the American Rescue Plan Act is this money coming from? Is it where we had, because I know we have drainage money. I wasn't sure which project it was going to be tied to.
Right. This is the actuator replacement is the ARPA funds?
That's the title on it.
Oh, okay. Which ones? Hang on.
The very last one that we added. It's basin D improvements.
Okay.
It was the very last amendment that we made. And it's like $357,000. It's not a whole lot.
I thought it was actuator.
Okay. So you also say with any budget amendments necessary to facilitate this project to come before the council at a later date. The architect or the engineer, I mean, said that he thought maybe it was going to be 1.8 million and this bid came in at 1.6.
Which is good because we had budgeted originally even a little bit less than that. So we got a good bid. I feel, you know, very good about the bid we've gotten because it's, you know, there's $200,000 between them.
Right. So I mean, yeah, so it's just $182,000 difference. But I guess I'm trying to figure out what do we think the project is going to cost us if we're already thinking there are going to be budget amendments?
That's just if we have to do budget amendments. It's not, I'm not counting on it. I'm not putting it out there, hey, come get more money. And they have to go through our engineer and through our department head and, you know, before they, it's not just free money. They got to prove that they would need, there's good contract documents and, you know, they're going to follow those contract documents. So I don't, I don't think we're inviting it. If they do have to come back, I don't think any more of that money, that won't be, that money won't be ARPA. If, if your next question is where's the money going to come from? It'll either come from internally, inside the department, or if I have to, from the general fund if I would have to. But it won't be any more ARPA funds because as you know, and you can look later tonight, we're moving on a lot of other ARPA funds.
Right. Right. And do we know where this sewer work is going to be done? Because I couldn't tell from the...
Sure. Vince is here tonight and Susan's here from the engineer. So somebody can come up.
I'll start. Susan, you can come with me too.
All right.
Yeah, yeah.
So...
Good evening, Neil.
Just remember, budget amendments can work both ways as well. So...
Oh, I know. But usually it's a...
Oh, come on. We had a few of them.
We had a lot of wins there.
Okay, Vince. I'm messing with Freddie more than anything.
No, I know. And I just, you know, I hate change orders probably more than you. Right? But it can go both ways.
I don't know. I don't know if you can hate him more than her.
And at the end of this, there's always a budget amendment at the end of it to balance out.
Absolutely.
Right? So anyway, this project deals with a target area because it's an LCDBG project. A lot of Acadian Acres area down past Main Street and St. Peter Street and encompasses a part of that area as well. The majority of it is dealing with the pump station though in the Acadian Acres area and some problems that have been a red flag for, for years that we've been trying to address. So it's going to be a Santa Inez pump station. It's going to receive some upgrades, changing some pumps out. There are two pipelines from that pump station that go and follow different paths to the Landry Drive pump station by Pelican Park, not Pelican Park, the baseball field.
Katyana Ballpark.
Katyana Ballpark. And, and so we're changing those lines from six inches to eight inches. So the majority of work you're going to see there, depending on how that all goes, you may see some rehab in that target area.
Okay. I'm just asked because I know that the block grant is really for low income areas.
It is.
I'm not sure Acadian Acres is going to be considered low income.
Oh, it was.
It was?
Oh, absolutely. We don't make that decision.
Okay.
The state makes that decision.
Okay.
And it all qualified, everything was, was pre-approved.
Okay.
And, and that's always pre-approved, you know, before we even know that we target that money from the state.
Yeah, they would not give us the money if it was not approved.
Okay. All right. The other thing is, and this is probably more for Freddie than you, but because this is, this going, this is a block grant, they are requesting that our, I guess as part of the contract with the federal government, that they have to use minority or try to look for minorities to work on this project, people in the community. And so I just want to know, what are we going to do to publicize that information so that people who are looking for jobs might have an opportunity to be hired by this company? Because they, I think they need our help. It's said in here somewhere that they need our help. So how are we going to make sure that we are recruiting people from the community who are unemployed to kind of get some of these jobs and maybe make some money off of this project?
There are going to be signs posted. We'll meet with the contractor and they'll ask, hey, whether you want these signs. Your names will be on the signs, the mayor's names.
And I got no problem sharing that, social media.
Okay.
Right.
It's a requirement of the contract that they, I mean, I do federal projects with my construction companies. So it is a requirement that they reach out. It's not just, hey, hire minorities or hire people who are low income and then don't do anything to do it. I mean, they have steps they have to take. So once they publicize that, I have no problem. We've done that in the past. We can pick up from what they do and share it on social media and between what all, you know, our social media reaches, what your personal social media reaches, the city's Facebook, the city's website, you know, we'll get the message out there. Now whether people come or not, you know, I don't know, but...
Right. No, I get that. I just want to make sure that we have a plan to kind of make sure this information gets out to the community because our employment rate is very high in New Iberia.
A lot of the previous contractors, people have walked up off the street and they've given them jobs, right?
Okay.
In the past. And I don't know specifically, maybe you do, if they have to do anything in particular to advertise for that. It's, it's up to the contractor though to do it.
Okay.
And try to use minority and women business enterprises.
Yep.
Okay.
But there's a fine line between what government can do and private industry can do when you come in to hire and labor. You know, there's, you can't, you got to stay in your lane when it comes to them hiring their employees.
Absolutely.
No. But there's, this is a requirement of this program.
But they have to, they have to fulfill it.
And I'm not saying that we would hire them. I'm saying that we would make sure that the word got out to the communities.
Correct.
Oh, absolutely.
That there's an opportunity for these people to be hired and make some money on this project.
Well, we can at least do that, I think.
And I've done that before to help meet the requirement, you know, just to get it out there. There's nothing wrong with that.
No problem.
Cool.
Good deal.
Okay. All right. That's it. Thank you.
Any other, while you're up here, anybody else have any questions or comments?
Of course we do.
Okay, great.
So this is something just to kind of alleviate our issues for right now until we get the bigger project, hopefully?
Well, hopefully permanently. But we do have another project that's going to build upon this project.
Okay, got you.
Right? And we're pursuing that and moving forward with that one as well. It's, it's being designed.
Very good. All right.
That's our project that's coming with the state, the money that we're asking for again. Some of it, huh?
No, but we talked about it. We'll, we'll discuss that at another time. That, I think that's going to be a normal capital budget. We'll carry forward. It's in the budget now and the plan is to carry that forward.
Well, I know the money's there, so, okay. I'm fine with that.
Yes, it was, it was budgeted.
Okay. I'm fine with that.
We just going to carry it forward because we didn't use it this fiscal.
All right. Don't forget to tell Kevin.
No, it's, it's in there.
I know it's already in there. I'm picking it up.
We had the first meeting, we just got it.
I know. It's in there.
I didn't get a ye and ne on it. It was presented.
We're running totals on every department and I'll be getting back with all of y'all very soon.
Right. All good.
Good. Thank you. Anybody else?
I know you hate this question. So when will we get started if this is approved tonight?
Susan will talk to the contractor about a notice to proceed.
That's a good question.
I always ask.
It's at least a month. It could be two. Because, you know, workforce is still a problem for everyone.
Gotcha. Okay.
Trying to fix that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good. Thank you all. Anybody else? Questions, comments? And thank you all very much. I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you all. Madam Clerk. Where to be?
Resolution 22-145. Approving agreement for professional engineering services with Domain Zabo and Associates for services associated with electric valve actuator project and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do have a motion.
Don't move.
Motion.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsal and a second by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson Reed. Is there any discussion on this item?
This is just their engineering fees, not...
Yes.
Associated with this project.
Correct. Anybody else? And please vote your machines. Thank you very much.
No, I want to ask, just quick, Vince, just, I know we had last meeting, you, we had made a comment about connecting with parish government on the flows and stuff for the, the plant. And that, has that exchange happened?
Yes. We received some data last week, I believe it was, which is what our consultants needed to do that capacity needs assessment, which was good. So now he's got what he needs to, to do that analysis. And I also reached out to the state to see if there might be some, some more money in the water sector around two funds for them to use for improvements at the city-owned plant. And the response I got back from the state was positive. So that was presented in an email to the parish and sewer district today.
Yeah. I know we mentioned potential flow rates and, and last time I talked, so you got that. It's good to hear.
Yes. It's, it's moving forward. The, the next round of applications for ARPA for, for water sector starts July 15. So you have from July to the end of August of this, this year to get the applications in. And, and hopefully the parish will, will move to do that.
So let the record note that our, our coordinator for the city, our, our department head for the city is trying to help the parish get some money.
That's right. Absolutely.
That's a good thing. Hope it works.
Hey, before you walk away, Vince, when you meet with the contractors as they start to kind of ready to hire people, if they have like signs they're going to be putting out, if they would give some to us that we can put them in some strategic places that people might not see because maybe they don't travel that part of town that often?
Some flyers? The signs are fixed. They're four by eight or even bigger. These are big, big signs, but...
Flyers, whatever.
Okay. We can bring that up at the pre-construction meeting.
Okay.
You know, but we'll ask them, maybe make that an item to say, hey, if you print up some stuff, we'll get some small flyers out.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, good deal.
Madam Clerk. Item 3C.
Resolution 22-146. Approving contract for professional services with architect Paul Allen for professional services associated with the American Rescue Plan project entitled Bank Avenue Park Improvements and Additions and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do have a motion.
Motion.
I don't know. Motion by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson Reed and a second by Councilman David Broussard. Is there any discussion on this project, on this resolution?
Yeah, so I just have a couple of questions. We have Bank Avenue Park Improvements and Additions. I know we were talking about the walking trail and some lights on the walking trail. Do we have plans for, I mean, does that include plans like for the bathrooms? We talked about the bathroom situation there.
We, we are going to combine, right. We're going to combine ARPA because remember we have money coming for all the parks through graciously through our capital outlay with the state. So the ARPA projects need to stick to kind of the ARPA list that we have, which is the LED lighting, which is the green walking path, which is some landscaping, you know, those items. If it's on our list, then we'll cover it with the ARPA because that, I don't want to deviate from the program.
Okay.
If it's not on the ARPA list, well, and I don't, correct me that I don't remember the exact figure, but we have $300,000, $400,000 coming for Bank Park from capital outlay. So what we're in the process of working on is nailing down the ARPA stuff because that's pretty defined. And then we're beginning to come up with a plan for what else we want to do in the park. And what I'm going to do for Bank Park as well as for West End Park and Seer Gates, for our three main parks, is come up with a little master plan that we're going to put together so that we can continue to work on this. What I think is going to happen is we'll start the ARPA programs now with the master plan. We'll come back to the council and of course present it and of course the council people for that area. We'll kind of look at it and say, okay, this is, this is what we're going to do next with the capital outlay money. I know we won't do everything, but what I'm trying to do is build a plan that next year's capital outlay, we can do the same thing. So I, I, I see that we have great need in our parks and I know I can't do it all at once. So ARPA is first because it's kind of defined. We have to work within what we said we would do for ARPA. So with the other monies where we'll start filling the gap of anything that we're not doing through ARPA.
Okay.
So it's coming. It's just a process. But the most important thing is to get the ARPA stuff started and then to nail down a master plan so that we know what we're working toward. Because every park, I walk with council people, we go look. I'm in the parks. I was in the West End Park today for a while. You can look and everywhere you look, there's something to do. I mean, their maintenance has been deferred for way too long. So we have a lot of things that we want to improve, but we've got a lot of things we've got to back up and fix.
Right.
So I think this is a good plan to kind of accomplish both.
Okay. It's just Bank Street Park, that whole, I just want to make sure that bathroom situation is definitely on that list. Tennis courts, because that's a problem.
The bathroom and the tennis courts, we might be able to do some of the lighting with the ARPA money, but the bathroom will probably be handled with some of the capital outlay.
Okay.
What's good is they'll be coming back to back. What I, what I want to kind of show our citizens and prove to ourselves, I guess, too, is that once we start, we're not going to stop. In other words, you know, you look at the splash pad in the West End Park. We did a small one. We did a playground equipment. We swore we'd be back to make it a better thing. That's in the works now and we'll start in, after August when the kids quit using it. So it's the same thing with Bank. Once we start and we start fixing the infrastructure, I want people to understand we'll be back with capital outlay money and we'll be back again with, you know, future money. Because I can't do it all at once, but if we don't spread the love through every district and every community and every park that our people use, it's, it's not fair. So to me, by spreading it around and working in all these parts of town and getting some things accomplished, knowing that we're coming back is a fair way that all of us are, are doing our jobs. We all, you know, the people we represent are all, you know, can see some benefit.
Absolutely. The, this probably is for Mr. Allen more than anyone. So tonight, we're going to spend a lot of time talking about a lot of projects that you're going to be working on with us. And in your contract, one of the things it says is that, and I think it's section 4.3.4, that it needs, that these projects have to start within six months of the date of the resolution being signed. Otherwise, we have to start paying at additional services. I didn't see a rate for the additional services. But I guess I'm trying to figure out, we, we're approving like, I don't know, five or six of these things.
It's not going to be any additional fees. I mean, we, we've negotiated it. We've put it down. I got, they're all going to start.
Okay. I guess my point is that it's in the contract, so it can be activated.
They all start. You know? Once I hit the go button, when, if you, you approve me to sign these contracts, it's going to start.
Right. That's actually the start period for our contract is when Freddie signs.
Right.
So it's automatic, it's starting.
In other words, it's going to start.
Right. But my whole point is, we're going to, we have like, I don't know, I didn't count them, but maybe like six or seven of them tonight. We already had some going. So...
But when I sign them, his time starts running.
Right. That's what I'm saying. So in six months, but it's...
It's six months to sign and get going. In other words, it's not six months to finish the project. So when I sign the contract...
We probably should read section 4.3.4 again of that contract. I may have misinterpreted, but it didn't sound like that to me.
I assure you, the fees are what I change on these projects.
Okay.
So I assure you, the work will not stop on these projects. It's automatic. When Freddie signs a contract, we're making scopes. We're defining costs. We're setting schedules. We're moving at every one of these projects in association with its master plans. So I mean, we're engaged and that's the point. It's not like anything's going to happen in six months. In six months, we're probably going to be pretty well defined about where we can go with every one of these projects.
Maybe.
So I would not worry about that clause. If you want, I can write a letter to say delete or ignore.
It's on camera, so that's probably a do, but...
Your legal advisor is right here too. He's looked at our contract, so...
And again, I'm...
No.
No, you have not.
No. No. I don't review these.
Okay. So I'm, I was just reading through these things and I just noticed that clause. And if it, it sounded like it was saying that if it's not finished in six months, then it starts with this additional services fee. I didn't see what the rate was. I'm just concerned.
Can we just strike 4.3.4?
Well, it wasn't struck in the amendment, so that's why I'm bringing it up. I just.
I've got no problem striking it.
I don't either.
Not being completed within six months.
So you see, it is, that's correct, what I'm saying, based on.
Of his architectural work. I mean, projects.
It says the project.
Project has one, when you state the project time, we have many projects that run a year, you know, hang on.
Again, agreed. I'm just asking because it's in the contract, and I, one thing I know, you can activate something that's in the contract. And if we sign it, we're subject to it.
Okay.
You cannot get any more of my work either.
Why don't you give me a minute?
I mean, you know, no offense, Paul, but I mean, it works both ways.
Okay, give me a minute, let me look at it.
Okay, I just, I'm just asking, but, and so here's the other question, and this may be for you, Freddie. Again, we're going to talk about six or seven projects tonight. Who's going to decide the priority on what gets started first? Because, I mean, clearly, we got stuff already started, we got this stuff we're going to start now, once we sign this. Is there a priority, I mean, are they deciding the priority of what they work on first, or are you deciding the priority of the projects?
The way it's worked so far, we decided together, but I basically reiterate that I need things to happen all over town, that I need projects not in just one district or one area of town, so I'm very conscious of that. And this is the one time, I don't think people realize that, this is the one time we're going to have this much money to spend between the grants, the ARPA, the capital outlet. We'll never see this again, so.
No, and I think this is great.
To go off as well as it can for my whole community, on a marital whole town. So we spent a lot of time, conscious effort, saying, get this started, get that started, and really try to lay it out where we're spreading out the activity throughout the whole community.
And I completely understand, and I agree with that strategy. I'm just trying to understand how we're going to prioritize these things for him, because we're, this is a lot of work going.
I'm going to hit the go button with your approval. I'm going to sign and hit the go button, and one of the first things we're going to do, because we already talked about it, we're beginning this week, as a matter of fact, to walk each site, to look at each thing of what we think, bringing the master study, because that's our base, kind of looking at what we're doing, and we've already talked about scheduling, you know, who's going to pop in. Because it's a lot of, being a contractor, having a design firm, it's, there's not that many contractors, we're not a huge town. So one, I have to think strategically to spend the money the best way for the city. You know, if I bid them all at once, then my prices are not going to be as competitive. If, or I'm going to tie up my good contractors, or the ones that do city work, or want to do city work, so there is a little strategy to, you know, how we let them. There is a little strategy, again, like I said, to make sure that activities happen all over town, and then I'm looking for the best price, because I know the conditions we're in right now, I know materials are off, up, labor's, you know, hard to find. Our prices could be going up, so I'm also looking at these and saying, okay, which ones do I think I'm going to get the best deal on right now?
Well, and that's.
Based on, based on what we're doing, because you've got to kind of look at your market.
Absolutely, I'm just, again, I'm just asking.
No, that's fine.
How we're going to prioritize this, because, again, we're a small town, we use a lot of the same people to do work in our town. And so that's a resource issue, so we got to make sure we plan our, and when we talk about doing work in all three parks, chances are, we're going to be using the same contractors or similar contractors, and it's just, I'm just asking how we're going to prioritize it, because it seems like it's a lot starting at once.
It is.
Okay.
Which is a great problem to have. Yes, sir.
Okay, I read it.
If you don't mind, I'm going to call on our attorney on your 4.3.
4.3.4. So that deals with the situation where additional services are needed, the services are not completed within six months through no fault of the architect. So it's not Paul's fault that this would happen, okay? So those are compensated as additional services, and the schedule of services, Article 4, which is on page eight, says additional services is included in the percentage basis fee provided in section 11.1.
Okay.
I think the additional services are already in the flat fee that's in 11.1.
Okay, because I didn't, there's a, the section in 11.1 that says additional services, I believe, and there's no rate. That's, that's why it just kind of stuck out.
That's 11.2.
11.2, you're right.
11.2, but this says you look to 11.1, and it's included.
Okay.
So.
And in 30 years of doing this as my own business, I never had anybody, I never got to charge anybody any extra money six months in.
Okay, I'm just saying.
Yeah, well, I think that clears it up.
Yeah, and this is through no fault of Paul.
Yeah, so I'm just saying, what did we hold them up for some reason, materials, whatever? We only have a certain amount of money to spend.
Yes, ma'am. Keep watching. I mean, it's not a bad thing.
There's a dollar figure there.
Anything else?
I have some other questions, but I'll ask later.
Well, you got, let's see, I'm not being cocky, you've got a whole bunch of opportunities, we've got a bunch of.
I know.
All right, anybody else? I think, Mr. Russo, Councilman Russo.
We're talking about projects?
Yes, sir.
And every district has their projects, what we spending that $100,000 that we get one time only?
Yeah.
I have some people in District 3 that were kind of disappointed that I put some of my $100,000 on Dale Street.
You did.
Sidewalks for the safety of the people. We have a safety on Center Street too, going to Lowe's, into our Pepperplex sidewalks there. So I want the people to know that we gave and give and take.
And we appreciate that very much.
Because I could have used that a lot. I'm finding out after the fact, I could have used that a lot on my end, because I'm having some people question that, so.
But Mr. Russo, you're not talking.
Oh, yeah.
And I really think that's a good application of TIP dollars.
That's good.
So I don't think you're losing anything. You partnered with two other council people to improve an area of town, and I appreciate that. And I plan on asking this council, especially with the money we spent at the Pepperplex, and you and I talked about that, to, not all the way from Admiral Doyle to, you know, it's not going to happen, but around the Pepperplex, around Lowe's, around the hotels, and that one little gas station, just in that little vicinity, all right? I, at some point, plan on coming, it's all in the TIP district, to say, let's use some TIP dollars and put some sidewalks there.
Yep.
So I think you're going to win twice. I mean, I know that people don't see something immediate and the phone rings, but I think what you did was partner with council people to make the money go further and allow that big sidewalk project to happen. And then you go back it up and get some TIP dollars that really, no offense, nobody else can do, because they don't have a TIP district. So I think you played your cards well, but you're going to end up with a lot of sidewalks.
Relating to the.
No, it's okay.
Or relating to my constituents.
Well, now that you're relating to them, then we're going to find another way to pay them results.
That's good.
Well, I'd like to say, on behalf of District 5, because I'm one of the people that you partnered with, and I'm sure Ms. Ledbetter feels the same way, we appreciate you partnering with us, because what we've done is, we've not only created a safe place for people to walk down Dale Street, which, I mean, it connects to your district, because Bank Street, on the other side of Bank is your district where the sidewalks are. And so now we can go all the way down to also create a safe place for the kids to walk to school. Because the students from Nish, when they walked to school, they were walking in the street. So we've just done a huge service for not only just the regular constituents, but for the students, so thank you very much. We appreciate it.
I wanted to bring it up because we were talking about the project.
I understand. We're back on the Bank project, so any other comments on the Bank Street project? None? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, 3D.
Resolution 22-147, approving contract for professional services with Architect Paul Alne for services associated with the American Rescue Plan Act project entitled Hopkins Street Gateway, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do I have a motion? Go move.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas, and I think the second was Councilwoman Dee Johnson Reed. Let's have our discussion on this item. Any discussion?
What is it?
Well, what we're doing is doing a gateway, because Hopkins Street is a cultural district, Hopkins Street part of it is in the historic district. So we can't do a gateway that you would think across the whole street, because it's a state highway, and they won't let us do that. But we can do something on each end that gives you a marker, that lets you know, kind of fake out as if it would be an arch over the top, that that's one idea we have. But we'd like to mark the defining areas of those districts, bring those districts some attention. There's other grant money and other investment opportunity we're hoping to spur. We talked about brightly doing maybe some crosswalks, that the road would have a design to it at the crosswalk. We talked about doing some landscaping and some signage, and just mark those areas, because they are historically significant, and there are districts that we can justify other grants and other money. So it's a way to kind of let you know, you're going into a gateway, you're going into an area that has been designated, and that is, you know, a cultural area that needs to be, needs to be, needs to have a little monument that you enter into, that kind of brings some attention to it. And being that it is a cultural district, being that it is part of the historic district on this end anyway, I think that bringing this attention to it could actually help us spur some development and some other grant opportunities.
There's a lot of history on that street.
There is, there is.
So.
I just envisioned a big archway, but I was like, oh, that's what it really is though.
You know, that's just like, you look at those great old pictures of downtown, and they have banners stretched across Main Street, or they'll have a permanent sign that's up by cables. I tried that more than once, DOT will not let us do that, that's a thing of the past.
Maybe some little columns or outside, that kind of situation.
Yeah, and we'll be working on that, you know, the first step is to get them locked up so that they can begin to do concepts.
Okay, gotcha.
And we had talked about this, it's in the master plan, again, if you look, there's, we had a whole sheet on it in the master plan originally. So I think it's a, you know, a very worthwhile project.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
So do we know what side of Hopkins Street it's going to be located on? Is it going to be closer to Main, or is it, or is it going to be closer to?
I was really kind of hoping to do two if I had enough money. If I don't, then it would be, the part that connects to Main somewhere along that area, that's also in the historic district, would be nice if we can only afford one. But that's something that we're kind of fleshing out, and then, of course, as always, you've got to find a place to put it. We have some right of ways, so we can utilize some of the right of way. Depending on how big it is or what we do, we might have to try to acquire some property. I stay away from that, because you saw how long it took, like, the parish to get the property for the railroad boxes, you know, that held them up for over a year. I mean, sometimes it's tough to get somebody to sell a little bitty piece of property, and I'm not going to take anybody's property. But, anyway, so that's kind of up for discussion and up for design, but that's the concept of what we're trying to do.
Okay, thank you.
And so we also have a weight finding system that we designed out for the city. And so it defines where those districts are, so by having the district available, once a tourist person gets in that location, it's so much easier for orientation.
Okay.
Yep.
Anybody else? And I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. All right, 3E.
Resolution 22-148, approving contract for professional services with Architect Paul Alne for services associated with the American Rescue Plan Act project entitled City Park Improvements, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Motion, Councilwoman Dee Johnson Reed, and a second, Councilwoman Brooke Morcott. Any discussion on this item?
What are we doing here?
I'm sorry?
I just asked, what are we doing here?
Yeah, yeah.
I was about to say, what's the scope of work here?
This one, Paul, I really should run and get my ARPA stuff off my desk, but this is the one where we are, just pull it up. This is the one where we're taking the old pool, and, okay, the existing pool that's in City Park that we are not replacing. We plan on, at some point, to do a pool at Bank Park, is what we had decided. And remember, we're going with a new entry from Bank Park, from Admiral Doyle.
Right.
But this project takes the pool, it finishes demolishing, which, there's almost nothing left, of the old pool house. All the roofs been pulled off, the structure was rotten, it's got issues. So that little building, or just the walls of it, will come down. We're going to move the skate park. The skate park is something that's well utilized, but it's kind of off on its own. It's actually on parish property, and it's fairly disconnected from the park. I love our skaters, I think the skate park is cool, but they need a little supervision. I've had some issues there. So by taking the old swimming pool, why get rid of a good hole when you don't have to? By taking the cement area of the pool, we can do a skate park there that actually goes down and gives you some pipes, gives you some ramps, it'll be cool. So that area will be incorporated as a skate park. All of the existing skate park equipment will move over next to the pool. Now, the splash pad operates independently on its own pump and its own system, so the little splash pad will stay. So that'll stay. We end up with a really nice skate park that utilizes the old pool. It's now right next to the community center, so that it can be monitored, because we have had a few issues. Kids will be kids, and then we also are going to sneak in a few more parking spaces, in that, not messing up any trees, but there's a little area that we could at least pick up a few more parking spaces that we desperately need there. So that's kind of the scope of that. It fixes a problem, it doesn't throw something away that can be recycled, and so that's what we're doing with that.
Are we going to put lights there? I mean, is it going to shut down at a certain time?
I think it's going to have to shut down at a certain time. What we have right now, it's open all the time, and I have had some complaints and some issues of kids at night, because, you know, it isn't locked. We are going to have to light it, because I need it to be safe, and we are looking at that it probably will not be able to be 24 hours.
Okay.
What happens with the old skate park?
It moves over and becomes part of this. In other words, all that equipment will move off the parish property, you'll have, you'll utilize the old swimming pool, but all those other, what do I want to call them? Thank you, dude. All the other skating apparatus will come with us and be there. I don't want to waste that, it's all good stuff.
Okay, so the property just goes back to the parish and they can do whatever.
Yeah, they just, they loaned it to us, basically.
It was originally designed to be a parking lot.
Oh, okay.
When we designed the park, the skate park, many years ago. And that's what the parish asked. Could you please design it to be like a parking lot?
Okay.
So it'll convert, like Freddie says, to a parking lot.
Okay, gotcha, perfect.
But I think that utilizes something that we have, and we've had a few issues with that kids, you can't punish the good, the bad, just because of a few bad kids, but there's been a few issues there, so I think this gives us something even better, and puts us in an area where we can supervise them.
I'm assuming it's going to be fenced in.
Yes.
It'd be fenced in, I'm sure, huh?
Yeah, because we do want to control it a little better than we have with the other one. And I've run it by the insurance company, opened up the other one, because before y'all got here, well, some of us were here, it was closed. And so we went through a bunch of requirements with the insurance company, so that we could open again, and we plan on showing them this design to make sure that they are happy with it again, because that was an issue in the past. Anybody other questions? Comments? Well, then please vote your machines. Thank you. 3F.
Resolution 22-149, approving contract for professional services with Architect Paul Alne for services associated with the American Rescue Plan Act project entitled Upgrades to Steamboat Pavilion, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do I have a motion?
Vote.
Second, motion by Councilman David Broussard, and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas. Questions or comments on this project?
So this is the, oh.
This is the restroom and the stage. This gives us the parking area that's in the rear, that is like 12 spaces right now. That will become the new restroom for downtown. It actually will be designed where there's two small restrooms that are gated, and then when we have events, you go through another gate, and then there are two larger restrooms, so that when fairs or festivals need a lot of restrooms, they can have them. It will give us, again, two little men and women's that will be open downtown, that our crews are going to open in the morning and close at night, but it'll only be one stall of each, because, let's face it, I've had some problems of vandalism, theft, and all kind of other things. So we don't need to go there, but.
Dipping out.
Yeah, yeah. So this will give us the restrooms, and then the top of the restroom, the roof of the restroom, if you will, will be the stage. That will give us a permanent stage, so that they don't have to set up the stage constantly for all of our fairs and festivals, number one. Number two, it doubles the size of the Steamboat Pavilion, because the stage they put in place now is way too large. Now, when you put the stage in, you have almost no room for people. So we're never going to get a civic center. Bully Plaza is the most historic parking lot.
I'm just saying, never.
Well, not anytime soon. So that outdoor area that we are fixing up gives us the closest thing. And if you think about it, it's a parking lot that they tore a bunch of historic buildings down under urban renewal in the 70s, but it's still the heart of our town. Every fair, every festival, people come from all over town, people come from out of town, that's where all our events are held. So it's a great place to spend this money, to give us a permanent improvement, that I'm only hoping we can expand on. And really, I think that permanent stage and those new restrooms will let us do some more, I'm going to call them internals, some more community events, some more things that bring our people downtown, is my hope.
Okay.
Anybody else?
I'm a long ways, Freddie.
We've got a long way to go.
Then we started with the posts holding the wall up.
Oh, yeah, you remember that? Ooh, yeah. Some people weren't happy with me.
I'm a long, a long ways.
What Mr. Broussard was talking about was, the building was damaged, and previously, they wanted to tear it down and sell the property. And I was the pro temp at the time, and really felt that that was the center of our town, and that we should not put that in private hands. You could build an office building on it and suck up all the city parking lot every day. So I was like, this ain't going to happen. So graciously, some people from Cleco, some Public Works people, my construction crew, went and shored the building up the day of the night we were supposed to demo it.
Oh, wow.
And then we came to the meeting and put it up on the screen. I said, well, we don't need to demo it, it's all stabilized. And they were like, huh? And so, long story, and Mr. Broussard, and the rest of the council that was here, you know, had enough faith to think we braced it off well enough, that, because it was a sugarcane festival weekend, if I remember. And so it was going to get condemned and torn down, and I just thought, if we lose every brick to that building, we're going to lose that property. So it was kind of a weird deal, but yeah, I kind of forgot about that, Mr. Broussard, anyway.
Major event of saving.
Thank you for voting for that. Any other discussion on this? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Yeah, that was probably my wildest night in politics. Anyway. All right, where are we? 3G.
Resolution 22-150, approving contract for professional services with Architect Paul Alne for services associated with the American Rescue Plan Act project entitled West End Park Community Center Space Improvements for Boys and Girls Club, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman Dee Johnson Reed, and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas. Any discussion on this item?
Yeah, so, can we get an update on your conversations with the Boys and Girls Club? And have we signed a contract with them? Because I'd hate for us to spend this money and they don't come.
Thank you, and I agree. I'm getting the approval to sign, and I have a meeting with them, I want to say Thursday.
Okay.
And so that's coming. In other words, before we spend money, this is one that I really want to see happen, because the impact it can have on the community, what it can do for those kids, catching them at a young age, I think it's awesome, but it needs to start. So while you will authorize me to sign this contract, I will sign it, but I'm going to direct them not to start to do anything, and, you know, until they give me the green light. And they do need to, as much as I respect them and want them to come, and the great job they do on Center Street, they're going to kind of get told this week, it's either this Thursday or next Thursday, I don't have my calendar with me, but they're going to get to be asked to give me a schedule, to sign a commitment, so that I can spend the money on the plans, and we can get going. Because we've pledged a total, we had $50,000 from last year that carried over, and then we have a total of $180,000 now.
Right.
So it's a huge amount of money. It's a huge amount of money because of the impact I think it can have, but they do need to give us a commitment.
Right, because otherwise, we can make some other improvements.
Well, and if I have to amend the ARPA plan to do something else, I'm willing to do that, I'm hoping I don't have to. Because they talk, you know, they want it, and they see the need, they just have been busy, I meet them on Tuesday, sorry, it's next Tuesday.
Okay.
So it's coming, we're on the same page. I will not commit and do plans, because I could spend that money in, on that park or somewheres else, you know, on something else.
Yeah, or in the building across the street.
Yeah, which, now that we have the school, and you're exactly right. And part of this money, I am hoping, will do a combined little computer lab across the street that the whole community will utilize.
Right.
Any other comments or questions? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Item 3H.
Resolution 21.
Oh, I'm sorry.
-151, approving contract for professional services with Architect Paul Alne for services associated with the American Rescue Plan Act project entitled West End Park Improvements, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do I have a motion? Go move. Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas, and Councilwoman Dee Johnson Reed. This is the bind-up school, right? Pull this one up. Let me pull this one up, we've got a bunch of them.
So this is the walking trail improvement?
Yes, this is the walking trail, the LED lighting.
And this is going to expand the trail, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. This is where we also talked about doing some, maybe some wellness equipment.
Right.
Along the trail.
Exercise equipment.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. I just had to look, because, believe me, we do have a lot of projects.
So, guess I'm envisioning this right, what it costs to do the sidewalks on Dale Street and this amount of money, we should get a good bit of sidewalks around West End with this money?
Yeah, but some of it might be grass pavers, because we're concerned about meeting some of the requirements, and MS4 is a requirement. So some might be grass pavers, some might be asphalt, like the walking trail in City Park, you know, now.
Yeah.
Instead of concrete, because concrete's more expensive. You know, the combination of adding lighting and trying to do some wellness things in there as well, I don't want to spend all the money just on sidewalk.
Well, and I would hope that we wouldn't use cement, just because it's harder on your legs.
I agree, I agree.
So if you're going to be exercising, walking, you would want what we have in City Park and nothing else, or the rubber stuff.
Right, right. From the lady who walked across Spain. But anyway, it's true.
It is.
Cool. Any other questions or comments?
Good project.
Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. All right. Paul, thank you as always.
You're welcome. Thank you, guys.
And we, we'll be meeting real soon. Jimmy, these are revisits, I think?
No, no, we got two to set for a public hearing and one for a revisit.
That's true. Okay. Well, item 4A.
Resolution 22-152, declaring that the buildings and or structures that address 809 Edna Street in District 5 are in a dilapidated and dangerous condition, and setting public hearing on August 16, 2022.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Dee Johnson Reed, and Councilwoman Brooke Morcott.
I don't have any pictures. I didn't, we didn't send any this week.
Okay.
I think we do, Jimmy.
Oh, that's Edna.
No, yeah.
Yep, that's it.
Yeah, that's.
That's the house.
Okay. Your district? Yes, sir.
It is my district.
Yeah, hang on one second, Jim.
Well, I just want to explain why this is coming up again.
Okay.
Because we had some public hearing publication issues, and we had a notice issue on the third one with the right address.
Right.
So it's too bad Mr. Phillips is not here, because we're going to a lot of trouble to protect people's liberty.
Right.
You go.
So I have a question, and this is probably for you, Freddie.
Okay.
Someone called me and asked me, when we decide we're going to demolish a house, if someone decided they wanted to buy the house, can they come and buy the property before the building is demolished? And I said, I wasn't 100% sure. And I said, I wasn't one hundred percent sure. I thought we had said they would have the same issue because the house would need to be demolished, but I wasn't one hundred percent sure.
Now, I think when we've gone that far and determined that structurally it's not safe, that it's a real public issue, then if somebody else bought it, we'd be right back on them.
Can I give you a prime example?
Yeah.
The one right next door to this house, eight eleven Edna?
Right.
That's what would happen.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How long have we been fighting that one since before November, October?
That's right, you're right, you're absolutely, eight eleven, you're absolutely right.
I don't wanna see that happen. Once it's condemned, I tell them, no.
Okay.
It's gotta go.
Then I will share that information with them.
Jeff had his hand up as well.
Well, they can buy the problem, but they gotta fix it.
They gotta get on...
But are they, are we gonna give them, is it gonna be in a situation when they want, we want time and that?
Well, you know, I guess we could.
Okay.
But we try not to bring stuff back before the council when the council's already voted on.
Look at three eighteen weeks.
We've had exceptions.
Okay.
We've had exceptions, but...
Look at the one that's coming up for a revisit, that's another one.
Right.
We've been trying to help her get her going, but she's not taking an initiative.
Well, and I spoke with her, so I'll talk to you about that when that one comes up.
You know... We try to, we try to respect, you know, the council talks about this and votes. We have brought stuff up before and brought it back when somebody had a change of mind or the council member has a change of mind. So I'm never gonna close the door...
Right.
To that, but it's kinda difficult, it's kinda difficult when the council's made a decision to go back and make a different decision.
Okay, and I told them I wasn't sure, I'd asked while I was here, and so I will share that information with them.
Okay.
Okay, so the answer's no.
So it's not impossible, but it's gonna be their problem to deal with.
Right, and the council may not give them time. It may still say it has to be demolished.
We don't have a process for taking something we've decided is dangerous and then deciding it's temporarily not dangerous.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, okay. Got it, thank you.
Sure. Anybody else?
Public hearing.
Yep.
You need a vote?
Yep, no other discussion, please vote your machines.
Yeah, we need to get those notices out.
All right, four B.
Resolution twenty-two dash one fifty-three, declaring that the buildings and or structures at address eight oh eight Lombard Street in District Two are in a dilapidated and dangerous condition and setting a public hearing for August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Goslin and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Morcott.
Yeah, what was your resolution number?
Twenty-two, one fifty-three.
I got one fifty-two.
Yeah.
On the agenda?
Yeah.
On here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, correct, correction. On the actual, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I see that now.
So, um...
On the actual resolution?
Yeah, on the actual resolution.
I spoke with Councilman Lewis, and he said that he spoke with four or five members of the family that owns this house, and he said that his recommendation is for us to go ahead and demolish it.
Well, this is setting it for a public hearing.
Right now, we gotta set it for a public hearing. He called me too, but...
Yeah, okay.
We gotta go through the public hearing, then we can go after it.
There was an issue with notifications.
Yeah.
Right, right.
The lady was in California, she moved back here, so we got the address.
Yeah. But he kinda sent me his same sentiments, but I think we just have to wait till, you know.
Yeah, gotta hear it.
One step at a time.
Okay.
Any other discussion on setting this for public hearing? Then, please, sir? Okay, then please vote your machines. Thank you. We can't say we don't honor our process, you know, and that's a good thing. All right, four C.
Resolution twenty-two dash one fifty-four, declaring the buildings and structures located at three one eight Week Street, District Five, shall be repaired to conform to the building code of the city of New Iberia, and that the property owner return to the Board of Trustees for a revisit on August second, twenty twenty-two, to give an update on the status of remediations to this property.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Goslin and a second by Councilwoman Dee Dee Johnson Reed, and Jeff Simon hasn't handed.
Yeah, let me explain this one. We brought this before the council, giving notice to the landowner at the address that was on the tax roll at that time. There was a decision to revisit this, and this got bumped, I don't know, at least once or twice. So we delayed, you know, the final decision until, I guess, a recent meeting. During the interim, between the time we did the research and figured out what the address was and the last revisit, her address changed. So we believe, and I believe she's telling the truth, that she changed that address during that interim, and that's what the assessor shows. So we need to make sure she gets the correct notice, so we're gonna send this notice to her new address.
Okay.
Now, that being said, it doesn't mean that we don't revisit it and look at it like we would've looked at it before. But we just wanna make sure she has a chance to be here. And if you have a chance to communicate with her, please encourage her to be here, cuz we always encourage people to show up.
Absolutely, I mean, the one good thing I will say on her behalf is that every time she's known about her house being, you know, on our agenda, she has been here. The one time she wasn't here, when we voted to demolish it, it was because she didn't get the notice. So she is actively coming in and, you know, trying to get us to, you know, give her time.
She's not actively fixing it.
No.
Well, in her defense, she's, here's what she told me, and I'm just sharing the information. She called me and said that she was having problems with the contractor, and then she lost her job. And so when she's now in San Antonio, her son's graduating from, I don't know, one of the armed forces academy. And when she comes back, she should be starting her job, or a new job, and that she's gonna have the money after that to start working on the house again. So she, hopefully, I will let her know by the August second revisit, and hopefully she'll have some good news for us then.
Well, after this meeting, we'll send her a notice at the proper address.
Okay, all right.
We'll be putting all that in the mail.
Okay.
Any other discussion on this item? Then please vote your machines. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we move on to councilmen's remarks. Councilwoman Morcott?
Tomorrow is Job Fair, Second Chance Job Fair, at SLCC, New Iberia location in the Gem. It's from nine AM till noon. Usually that's geared towards people who have been locked up before, you know, it gives them an opportunity to go and find jobs. But the lady in charge of it said that anyone can go. Whoever is looking for a job can show up tomorrow. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Councilman Bruce Art.
Pelican trash pickup fellows, we having a new contract being drawn up a little bit in the near future? To, for another year, or how long is the one we have going?
I know, we are, it's out for bid now. We put a packet together, and we are taking bids, that is a ten-year proposition. We are taking bids right now, it was advertised last week. It's on central bidding as well. So we are bidding and with some options, but we are bidding out our garbage services, actually, right now.
Some of our, some of my constituents called up Pelican, they mixed up, they mixed up a little bit by telling them, we don't have a contract, the city doesn't have a contract with them. And they're, I'm getting calls about dead end streets, cul-de-sacs, that they're not passing on. So I'm getting more calls and more calls on Pelican. I'm not that satisfied yet.
Is it Republic, you talking about the trash?
I'm talking about the trash.
That's Republic.
Is that Pelican?
Yeah, it's Republic. It's Republic.
Okay, now...
Republic is not Pelicans, Republic...
Pelican picks up the garbage?
That's right.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Pelican, Pelican picks up the limbs, okay?
Limbs, that's what I'm talking about, yeah.
And the white goods, but we have a contract with them.
But... Who's picking up our hottest Pelican run, and they're running routes in the city, oh, it's Pelican, I see a truck pass by.
Yeah, Pelican for the bulkways, not for the trash, for the bulkways.
Okay.
For the trees and the white goods.
Yeah, that's the ones they call.
They come every two weeks cuz that's what our contract says.
But I'm having calls about picking up the bulk.
Well, there's also times that I get...
I'm not telling them the right thing about calling.
I get calls, and there are times that it's not something that's per Pelican's contract, or the trees are way too big, or a contractor has cut them and not picked them up, which we don't pick up behind contractors. And then the poor property owner is ripped because they paid somebody to take them off. So, I mean, believe me, I have a staff that works on all those calls every day. And some of them are justified, but some of them aren't, some of them, there's, you know, other circumstances.
So, I'm sorry, Mr. Bruce Art, go ahead.
Just wondering, cuz I've had several calls on picking up limbs and branches and other kinda, not the garbage, but...
Okay.
I thought I was telling them right to call Pelican.
Okay, well, if they call here at City Hall, we also handle that, and we monitor all those calls, and we record them all, so I know what's going on.
I've never got any calls from Gordon, he was so nice to us, and on route every time. But I think they're overlooking the dead end streets, and they're looking some of the, overlooking some cul-de-sacs, that's why I'm getting calls. They're looking down on them, but they don't see, so they don't go down.
Okay.
Those short streets and whatever. But it's doing me good, they're on the main streets. Every time the city gonna be there, they right there on time, but I think on some of them cul-de-sacs...
Okay.
They overlooking some spots.
All right, send me those addresses.
So I have a question related to that. Apparently, we have people that are cutting up trees and trash, you know, they got sofas, whatever. And what they're doing is they're putting them in front of empty lots.
Oh, yeah, all day long, not a new problem.
I know what you're talking about.
Not a new problem.
Yeah, they're sitting there some time for weeks, and so then, you know, you start getting the calls about it. So, I mean, in those situations, I've called up here and, or I've sent Amber an email to get it picked up. I'm assuming that, I mean, are they supposed to pick up in front of an empty lot?
They are not. All these, and that's kinda what some people give all of our trash providers a bum rap, okay? They are by house count. They're not by empty lots, okay? They don't bid it by empty lots, they bid it by house count. Cuz if you did every empty lot in the city, well, we would end up, I couldn't afford it, so it's...
And they're not supposed to have sofas...
Yeah.
On empty lot.
That's it, and a sofa ain't supposed to be on an empty lot. So the problem we have is people dump sofas, people have tires, they dump gas tanks, they dump anything they don't know where to put on an empty lot in the middle of the night, okay? It is not, and I get calls and people are mad, and people are saying, you know, they did, although Gordon was the man, they complained about Gordon, they complained about Pelicans, they complained about Republic, and it's not stuff that we can pick up, it's not part of their contract.
Well, what do we do in those situations?
Well, what we have been doing is spending our own money up to a point. In other words, we try to track it down. I got police officers who've gone digging garbage to see if we can figure out who it is. Well, there's no tag on a sofa, okay? So I'm not gonna find that. We, Pelicans has Jimmy goes look, Jimmy's found some stuff. We, we have had Pelicans, Gardens before, and Pelicans pick some of that up, but it is totally not in their contract, and they don't get paid for that. So, but have they, have they gone and picked it up? Yeah, I can tell you that they have. When I wear my welcome out for the month, or the, whoever's keeping track of that, or they've picked up too many already, then guess who gets the call? Poor Joe, okay? Then Joe's gotta go, Joe's budget, we've increased it every year on dumpsters, okay? It is to the point it is ridiculous. We burn up Joe's dumpster money, I think, in the first quarter of this year. You know, we halfway through, and more than halfway through now, but we burn up his money in the first four months. But we end up having to go pick some of that up. Does it stay for a while? Do we hope that somebody's gonna go, you know, pick it up themselves? We do. Do we hope we can talk a contractor to pick it up? We do, but it is a problem, and it is a huge problem. I would love my PD to bust a few people and put them on the front page of the paper and on our website, and I'm just really hoping that happens. Because it is definitely a problem.
So, and I know we've talked about this before, we still have a lot of, I'ma call them slumlards, although you guys might call them landlords. They will evict people, and they dump all of that stuff in front of the house, and it sits there forever. And it's a nuisance, and so, you know, it's like you wait for Pelican to come by and pick it up. And they don't always pick up everything, and so this just sits there.
Again, that's not a contract requirement to pick up, you know.
I know, but this is, I mean, when you're trying to clean up your city, I mean, that's just, that's horrible.
I know.
So we've got, we need a solution.
That's where a lot of our money has gone to sending Joe to pick it up. We do track down the landlord, we do call them, and there are times that they really do pick it up. Jimmy gets involved, look, he's coming back up chomping at the bit. But, you know, it is something that's an issue.
In those big piles, a lot of the problem is household garbage. If there's household garbage in a pile, they can't bring it to the landfill, so they can't pick it up. And everything's jumbled together. They put tires, trees, furniture, and household garbage. They cannot pick the household garbage up and just pick up the sofas. The garbage goes in the truck, they gotta bring it somewhere else. They can't bring it to the C and D landfill.
And I have a lot of those that...
That's one of the bigger problems.
Yeah, cuz I have a lot of people that complain though they didn't pick my stuff up, and then I ride and go, look, it's all jumbled up.
It's all garbage.
Right, and I don't know how we educate people on that, but I guess with our money that we have set aside for this, maybe we can do some sort of education on that.
I am hoping to take a little bit of the ARPA money that we have for blight cleanup and do some kinda education program.
Especially with our new contract coming out, I think it'd be a great idea.
Yeah, and so, the other thing is, is that, is there a way for us to even, and I don't even know what the fine is, but whatever the fine is, to raise that fine so that if nothing else, we stop these landlords from dumping that stuff out like that? Because it's ridiculous. I mean, it's out of hand, and I don't know if it's...
Think we have a...
We don't have an ordinance on the book that goes to that.
There needs to be some consequences for this.
If it's junk on the property...
Well, if they put it, I know, but if they...
They put it at the road, they expect it to get picked up.
And they think it's gonna get picked up, but the other thing is people go pick through it and make a big old mess, okay? That happens all the time. I see people digging in, and I'm like, man, it was all neat, what are y'all doing? They're looking for something. But there are instances that it's at the road, and it would be picked up, if people leave it alone. Yeah, it's gonna be two weeks later, well, like in the new contract I'm hoping to get, I'm asking for a price to do it every week. I'm asking for a price to pick up the limbs and the other stuff every week to see if we can afford that. That would eliminate, I mean, I was here as a mayor pro temp at first, and we picked it up every week. And the city was cleaner, and it didn't pile up, and it was less time for people to go dig through, it was less time for people to add to the pile, that's another thing. In New Iberia, if you see a pile, I think people think it's a requirement to add to the pile.
Yep.
Okay, that happens all the time, all right? I ride by, and I'm like, you don't live there, what you throwing at, you know, it's crazy. But if we got it every week, I think we'd be a lot better off. So I am hoping, in the new prices that we're getting, we can afford whoever is, you know, that we select, that they could do it every week. And that would kind of eliminate some of our problem.
Right. Cuz in communities where there are a lot of rental properties, this is a huge problem.
You got, you got two issues on Bank Street, you saw that?
Oh, yeah.
Just wanted to make aware of it.
Oh, no, I've seen it, I mean, it's just...
It's gonna grow too.
Yeah, exactly. So, I mean, we have to figure out a way to prevent this, cuz as we try to clean up this town, this stuff is a mess.
I get three to five emails from Kachoni, who's with Pelicans...
Yeah.
About piles that are scouted along the route. I, three to five a week.
We had people, somebody evicted someone out of a house and literally put this stuff in the street on Dale right before you get to the corner of Anne and Dale Street, that's the four-way stop. So literally in that curve, and people were swerving, I thought it was gonna be an accident. I mean, like, this is unbelievable, somebody finally pulled it back into the yard so it wouldn't cause an accident.
Well, that's the people that go there and pick through it, and they just throw it. They pick through it, and they throwing it over, they throwing it in the back of them so they can see what else is in the pile. They, they pick through it and they throwing it over, they throwing it in the back of them so they can see what else is in the pile.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we, we've talked at the ordinance committee about what piles are okay and what piles are not okay and it's really hard to decide.
It is.
You know, this is household goods that the people are gonna pick up and this is household goods with the refrigerator in it, you know, with all the stuff from the refrigerator when the person moves. No, the longer it's out there, the bigger the problem, there's no doubt about that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay. So we still gotta vote, do we vote?
Well, no, no, we're doing comments.
It's my turn.
Oh, we in announcements, yeah, I'm like, this went on so long before we were debating something, no.
Just quickly, I, I just, I just hope that some of the information that discussed tonight's gets disseminated in the public on, on the amount of projects that we're doing and, and if you, if you, if you just. Yeah, if you just, um, kinda do the math in your head and look at the numbers of the projects and the amount of money we spent and or we're gonna spend, it's gonna make a dramatic improvement in our community and, uh, we, you know, several million dollars, we authorized to push the green button tonight and, uh, I think this community's moving in the right direction.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, um, couple of things, one is, I just wanna remind everybody that it's summer and grass is growing really fast. Please keep your grass cut, but please don't leave the grass shavings on the street. That is such a big problem everywhere I go, I mean, grass is everywhere. All that's gonna do is push that grass into the drains and, you know, you know, summer's just starting, so we could have a hurricane this year. And then when we have a lot of flooding, please don't call me with that if you've one of those people who've actually let your grass go into the drain. Um, second thing is, is that the, um, Iberia Parish School System is gonna be hosting a STEM program for, I think, third through sixth graders, um, July eleventh through the fifteenth. It is the first of this kind, it is a huge deal. Um, our city, um, our parish doesn't have a STEM program for our students. I think Catholic High has one, but the Iberia Parish School System doesn't. This is kind of like their first, kinda like to step into this area and, um, I'm saying, parents, please make sure your kids get there and get there on time. They are looking for donations to help cover the cost of the food, um, you know, lunch and snacks for the kids. If you can, please donate, um, this is a huge deal, um, our kids are behind when it comes to STEM. The more we do in the area of STEM, the better our test scores are gonna be in math and science. And the more we prepare our kids for careers in STEM, and I can promise you, for somebody who worked in technology for thirty years, STEM will change their life. If they go into technology or any of those types of, um, careers, they're gonna make more money than they ever thought they could possibly make in Southwest, or, this is Southwest Louisiana.
Yeah.
Sorry, I don't even know where I am anymore. Uh, I, I promise you, the.
Y'all was voting on a discussion item.
Yeah, they're gonna make more money in STEM careers than they ever thought they could possibly make and they could stay here. And when they, when they stay here, they build bigger homes, um, they pay more tax and so our city gets better. So I'm asking you guys to please invest in our children by helping us to cover the cost of these, uh, lunches, because they can't use the federal money to do that, but as parents, and I don't have any kids here, our grandkids, my grandkids all live out of state. Um, but, I mean, I'll do whatever I can to help, so please join me, thank you.
Thank you, and with that on the STEM, we have a hundred thousand dollars that we are still looking to partner with the school board on STEM through the ARPA money, so we're hoping that they do this program, it gets going. We couldn't use that money yet, we are setting meetings up to do a cooperative endeavor agreement and to figure out how we are gonna really, you know, officially partner and be able to spend that money. But, you know, we all think that, you know, the STEM can open a lot of doors and do a lot of things for our local kids. So it's something that, just to tell you, we will be making a much bigger investment with that sometime in the near future.
Absolutely.
Oh, man, let's see what I got, uh, next council meeting July nineteenth. Uh, y'all can look at the MS four stormwater survey if you wanna contribute to that. And we got properties on Civic Source and next Thursday, we have a table at Eggs and Issues, the event that the chamber puts on.